What day is today? The sixth? So I will call the regular city commission meeting for City of Oregon City, May 6th order. Guess join me at the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you want to call the roll, Katie?
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
And Mayor Holliday?
Here.
Okay, so we have ceremonies, proclamations, presentation. I do have one proclamation for Historic Preservation Month. And as our policy is that we don't read these at the commission level, but there is someone here, I believe, Karen, are you going to do the?
For the proclamation?
For the presentation about?
Yes.
Okay. So Katie, here's the proclamation.
Well, thank you, Mayor Holliday, and happy Preservation Month, everybody. May is Preservation Month all over the nation. It's sponsored by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and we in Oregon City, as part of our Goal Five resources and support in our comprehensive plan for historic resources, we use this month of May to broaden our relationships with all of our other preservation organizations and to promote preservation throughout the month. And some of the programs we're doing this month is having the Fourth Annual Preservation Month Photo Contest, as well as other activities. So real briefly, Karen, why don't you put, maybe you can be the best Vanna White.
Yes, I'm Vanna.
So in cooperation with the Museum of the Oregon Territory and Clackamas County Historic Society, the Oregon City Historic Review Board with funding from Citizens Bank is pursuing a photo contest for the month of May into June. And we're looking for photos that best represent both physical buildings, but also that help demonstrate our heritage in the community. And what I really like about it is there's three categories: for youth, for children 10 and under, teens and adults. And it's really great, it's a great family activity. You can bring your children out for the day, walk around the community, find historic structures and viewpoints and vistas, take some photos, upload them to our website on www.oarcity.org/planing, and win cash prizes. And I know Commissioner Polly's daughter won a few years back, and that was really special. And we're really looking forward, this has been a really positive way to show how we in Oregon City are collaborating with all of our preservation organizations. Does she want to add anything?
Well, and I'll add, this year Christina's added a way to enter the contest. You can enter by taking a photograph and posting it on Instagram. It is, what did I say? Can I find it? And I'll be checking the internet for that marker and posting ones on an Instagram site that we've started. So if you're just out and about and you have your cellphone and you see something that really catches your eye, take a picture, put it up on your Instagram account, and we'll post it to our Instagram account. And if one of those is selected as the winner, we'll be contacting you for a copy of the photograph.
What if I don't have an Instagram account?
You can, we'll work on that for you. I'll show you how to download it.
And you can also even mail in a hard copy of your photo if you'd like to.
Slamming.
We also have McLaughlin Memorial Association had their Founder's Day last weekend, and they also have their art on the walls and a Ruth McBride Powers exhibit in the Rose Farm, as well as, the museum is doing a presentation on Highway 99E, Oregon's Main Street, this Saturday, May 9th. And the End of the Oregon Trail is sponsoring author Jane Kapatrick, who will have a presentation of her latest book. Next, city commission meeting will present the Ruth Powers Preservation Award, which I'm always really excited, recognizing both people and projects that embody the spirit of Ms. Powers and all she did in Oregon City. So you'll get to see my face again in about two weeks.
And the list of events that Christina just mentioned are attached to tonight's agenda. So if you're sitting at home and want to see more detail, just open the agenda, look at the attachments for this section of the meeting. And I do want to say on behalf of Clackamas County Historical Society, we are pleased for our fourth year in partnership with the Historic Review Board cosponsoring this. And I want to thank Citizens Bank for again sponsoring the prizes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next up is the citizen comments. We have Ann Meader, Jerry Herman. You can both come up. Oh, I forgot to mention this. If anybody has a cellphone, please either turn it off or turn it on silent. Go ahead. Ma'am?
My name is Ann Meader. I'm here representing the Clackamas County Aging Services Advisory Council. I talked to Carol on the phone, so here I am.
Hello.
One of our subcommittees is called Age Friendly Communities. And we sent you a letter and we talked about the project that we're doing. And we were just hoping to engage you and talk to you about age-friendly communities and how we can make Oregon City an age-friendly place. We think that there's a lot of stuff good that's going on. We're hoping to get some more stuff going on. In the letter, it said that 16% of this county currently is age 65 or older, so that's important. I attended a day-long conference of the Oregon Gerontology Association last week, and one of the things that stuck in my mind was that in 2030, more people in the entire world will be over 65 than under 15. So I think that's a force to be reckoned with. I don't mean that facetiously, but there's a lot of us. So we need to plan, you know, and we need to think about this. And I'm hoping that we can engage with anybody in the commission that's interested in talking with us. We sent you a list, and my counterpart has some packets for those of you that didn't get them and you'd like to read this stuff. We took the World Health Organization's list of age-friendly features that they consider to be an age-friendly city, and we pared them down to just a few because their list was, you know, kind of long. And so we came up with a one-page list, and we were hoping that you would look at it and see how Oregon City is doing, seeing how you can increase maybe the accessibility or the effectiveness or more age-friendly things for us, because we think that's important. We think that older adults are an important part of this community, that we contribute a lot in our money and our time, particularly our volunteerism. And so we, and we also believe that when older adults and younger people get together and work on an issue, that wonderful things happen. So we're just here to make ourselves known and hope that you'll talk to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess Mr. Shaw will be the point man on that.
Yes.
Well, I think it's a great thing to keep in mind as we do our concept plans and keep those points in mind, so, thank you.
Mr. Herman?
You're supposed to respect your elders.
What a great intro, too. I'm 69 and I'm feeling fine. I want you to know.
Thank you, Jerry.
Absolutely. Coming around the horn for you are some products that are specifically developed for your city, one which you know about and one you probably don't. The River Tours that we receive funding under the Oregon City Civic Improvement Trust start the third week in June and run for the next 16 Tuesdays through September. You see the card there that's coming around? I hope you all got it in front of you. Those were distributed in Las Vegas for the Go West Tourism Show, where about 5,000 people were there. 20,000 people were in Los, excuse me, in Los Angeles for the National Tourism Conference. And then there's another similar group up in Canada. So Oregon City, we hope, is getting well-known, at least for a product that you might not have thought was possible, River Tours on the River. Now, this vessel, of course, is the $3.5 million vessel owned by the Portland Spirit. Mayor Holliday asked me one time in the last month, can the Portland Spirit go through Willamette Falls locks? Absolutely. The locks are 190 feet long by 42 feet wide. How'd I know that? My vessel, which I started out doing tour programs before I even had a license, I didn't know you were supposed to have a license, nobody told me.
I don't even understand.
Got stuck sideways in there because it's 44 feet long, and it was very embarrassing for me with my particular group that time. But the Portland Spirit, the issue for it and all the vessels other than light jetcraft, jetboats, is channel issues. And you're going to hear soon about some efforts to bring channels to commerce. An effort has come together between three cities, Oregon City, Gladstone, and Westland, to preserve the channels that are so important to your legacy project and the falls and all this stuff that are deteriorating quite a lot because of infill. A strategy where we're going to try to get people to work together from the three cities and advocate for the right kind of permitting. Commissioner Shaw and I have been working on this, and another commissioner out of Gladstone, Commissioner Reisner. The second product in front of you is an Oregon City Tourism Team product that Rocky's a member of. And this is a cruise on a different jet boat. Not all jet boats are open. This is a covered jet boat called Explorer owned by the Portland Spirit. It's heated, it holds 35 passengers. The Willamette jet boats can hold 49, so they have a little more capacity. But one way or the other, both of those types of craft are able to negotiate between the seals, the sea lions, and the fishermen. And that's an important issue when we're trying to bring river-based tourism into this area. And our hope is that if this works well this spring, we would do winter tours, too, because it's capable of doing that. Going out on the river in a flood is pretty dramatic. It's pretty interesting to see. So both these products have been supported, the tourism team supported the Tom McCall Legacy Cruise, and Mayor Holliday looks a lot like Lawrence Rockefeller, I want you to know that. And Lawrence Rockefeller was at Willamette Falls in 1972 with Tom McCall, talking about how incredible the cleanup of Willamette had been. Rockefeller family invests in those kinds of things. And you look a lot like him. I'm hoping to get you on this cruise.
And you look like you're about out of time, too.
So we just wanted you to know that these products are brand-new products in tourism that are focused on the river, and they're different than the other kayak and canoe opportunities, which are great, too. So we're hoping to see more of this routinely in the future.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Hey, Jerry.
Eric Olson?
Well, actually, I'm here to see Mr. Shaw.
Wait till the microphone.
I'm actually here to see Mr. Shaw. This is, I'm a...
Name and where you're from?
My name is Eric Olson, and I'm actually from Malino. However, I'm representing the Aging Services Advisory Council and Subcommittee on Age Friendly Communities. So maybe you and I can have coffee.
How much does this pay, Eric?
Well, that's, we can negotiate that. I have these packets of information I'll leave here, and for any and all who are interested, take note, please, that in these is a specific mapping process that took place for six communities in Clackamas County, of which Oregon City is one. We plan on going to the other five. We started with Oregon City, just by throwing a dart at the map, essentially. And the mapping was, took place in 2011, so much has happened since then. You know that, we know that. And eight residents photographed and actually went around the entire city, looking at opportunities and obstacles for aging in place. They took over 50 photos. Fifteen residents and community stakeholders then took place in creating the documents that I'll leave for you here. And they talked about these particular environmental issues: the physical environment, transportation, housing, outdoor spaces and buildings, social environment, civic engagement, social participation and service environment. Oregon City happens to score pretty high and have a lot of very forward things in all of these areas, so there's no question. As my colleague said, we, our Subcommittee, the Age Friendly Communities Subcommittee, meets on the third Monday in the morning from 10 to 12, 9:30 to 12, excuse me. And we'd be happy if anybody would like to attend to solely make that meeting specifically in relationship to diving into this material. And/or, we can do it individually over coffee, whatever someone may wish to do. We know you've got many things on the horizon coming and changes happening all the time, and we want to recognize that, too. We're pretty excited about this and about the prospects of Clackamas County in particular and the efforts they're making to make communities age-friendly so that people can age in place. I personally can speak to that. Both my folks were able to age in place, my mother, until she was 94. And it's a huge difference in her quality of life. And I know lots of head shaking, and I'm sure you all would agree with that. So that's it.
Did you save information for us there?
It's all right here in this?
If you want to hear that.
Absolutely.
Do you have that in an electronic version?
I do, and I can...
Can you send that to Katie?
Sure.
Then she can distribute it, because I hate paper.
Absolutely, not a problem. Not a problem. I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, thanks, Eric.
Oh, yeah, thanks. So are there any other citizens who wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to public hearings. First one is 15-261, ordinance for introduction, number 15-1003, creating downtown economic improvement district. I assume this is Mr. Underwood.
Mayor? Yes, as you recall, the commission adopted a resolution on April 1st to call for a public hearing to establish a new Economic Improvement District. There was an effort that started earlier last year that, to renew the existing Economic Improvement District that failed earlier this year due to receiving over 33% of remonstrances from the business owners. This is basically our second attempt to establish that, and we are asking, just, we're introducing this ordinance tonight. The new boundaries for the ordinance, you have a map attached to the packet, but the new boundaries of the EID are Main Street from 5th Street to 16th Street. It includes all the properties located within the Willamette Falls Downtown District Zone with the exception of two tax lots, 200, oh, I'm sorry, with the exception of one tax lot, 200. Numbered side streets between McLaughlin Boulevard and the Bluff, and between McLaughlin Boulevard and the Center Street from 12th Street to 16th Street, with the exception of two tax lots being 3,400 and 3,800. And this district also includes Railroad Avenue. With that, I'll turn it over to you. We do have Jonathan Stone here, the Executive Director of the Downtown Organization, to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Stone is on the list, if there's anybody else.
I'm Jonathan Stone. I'm the Executive Director for the Downtown Oregon City Association and also a resident of Oregon City. I've spoken a number of times on this issue in front of you all, so merely just here to answer any questions, but also to submit the letter for record that you should have received by email from Roger Nickerson earlier today.
We did. Okay. Anything else?
Questions?
Did we hit our, did you hit your 33% or what was the?
No. The process, the way the process goes is if this is approved tonight, then we will notice the property owners with the correct assessment for each property, then they have a chance to remonstrate before the second public hearing.
But we anticipate that you've done the research and you anticipate that it's going to be taken care of.
Correct.
Because I don't want to do this again.
Neither do we.
All right, is there any other citizen comment? Then I'll close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
Let's see where we're at here. Okay, I would move, we approve 15-261.
First reading.
First reading. Ordinance for introduction, number 15-1003, creating the downtown economic improvement district.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Katie, call and roll.
Ordinance number 15-1003, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City creating the downtown economic improvement district.
Now you can call and roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
And it passes.
So moving on to PC 15-174, the first reading of ordinance number 14-1013 approving the Lynn Avenue-Leland Road-Meyers Road Corridor Plan. Staff on this, I assume is Mr. Conkle?
Mr. Lewis.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, that's right, that's right. Forgot about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we're asking you for the first reading of this ordinance. This topic's been before you many times. We call it the Lynn Avenue-Leland Road-Meyers Road Corridor Plan. Right here, it's active on my shelf and should be active on yours, too, but I'm sure you probably won't read it much. But lots of details in there, lots of information. It's a bit of a culmination from work that was, that started as far back as our Transportation System Plan, where there was lots of concerns associated with this particular corridor and lots of needs identified associated with this corridor. So with that information and with some inspiration from the city commission at the time, we move forward with the corridor plan. And so we put a lot of energy into that corridor plan. We think what's in there is a great assessment of what the existing conditions is and what we need to do in that corridor over a period of several years. It's not something that's going to be implemented tomorrow. It's going to take years to take on most of these projects. It's a very long corridor as well. But it helps us let the development community know, our own projects, if we can dovetail our utility projects with some of these improvements, we'd like to do that. Land acquisition, anything like that, that we can start implementing in a phased approach, we would choose to do that following the corridor plan. So we've had lots of public meetings on this. Planning Commission has approved the plan, and the city commission saw this plan in 2014, and at that time, we heard from the community concerns for the roundabout design at Lynn, Leland, Warner Parrot, Warner Millney, and Central Point. So at that time, the commission directed staff to pursue a intersection control analysis, which is really an analysis of other options that might be available at that, check the long-term and short-term costs associated with anything from the do-nothing option to the five-leg roundabout option. And out of that effort came still, long-term, the roundabout is the right solution for that intersection. So we've incorporated that and inserted that into this, into this plan. And so with that, we're really asking you to adopt the plan through this first reading. We'll bring it back to you one more time for a second reading. So that's over here for tonight.
With that, I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak on the subject? No? Okay. Then I will close the public hearing. Questions, comments?
I went up and visited the Mrs. Savage's property up there at the plant pantry, just to see how the trucks can get in and out of there and stuff. And it looks like by the most recent plan here, we really haven't changed the parking situation up there or that lot or your property too much. So it looks like the trucks can still have a egress-ingress into that property, in and out of there and stuff, safely. I've been just kind of looking at the map that we had, how that turnabout was going to be on there. So it looked like it was still going to be a safe way to do things there. So just curious about how the, kind of the project kind of touches the, one of Mr. Chief Band's buildings up there now, so Doug, the auxiliary building. So it looks like it's a little close, chief, but, you know, that's all.
It's not on our end.
Yeah.
I don't care. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think there's been much work put into this plan. I think it's, I think it's good. It's really important to have a plan. So as you were saying, Mr. Lewis, when projects come up, we can kind of dovetail things together and make sure that, you know, we make smart decisions on spending and that type of thing and getting things done in a cohesive way. So I think this is a good step as our community builds, especially out there with the South and Concept Plan, so. And the new police station.
So I will just reiterate my earlier comment, and I will continue to comment this way, that Mrs. Savage has been a longtime business owner and property owner in Oregon City, and she gave up some piece of her property the last time we did an interchange, you know, fixing this intersection. So I am absolutely going to be, we are not going to take a square inch of that property. And if we need to do something with our property to make that happen, that's the way I'm going to go. So I'm just letting everybody know that's where I'm at. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to hear the first reading of the ordinance number 14-1013, improving the Lynn Avenue-Leland Road-Meyers Road Corridor Plan.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Smith, Mr. Geismann.
Ordinance number 14-1013, an ordinance adopting the Lynn Avenue-Leland Road-Meyers Road Corridor Concept Plan and update to the Oregon City Transportation System Plan.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Passing.
Moving on. That's right, do we need to do something motion-wise to continue the sign code?
We're on 7A first.
Yes. Yes.
But we're on 7A first, which is the introduction of the CSafe?
7C is the sign code.
Oh, yeah, we're not there, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the front part of that. Okay, so we're on, we're on CSafe, I'm sorry. So I assume this is Chief Band?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm, I've been waiting to give this presentation for a while, and very, very excited about it, and I represent a team of about 60 people who are also very, very excited about it as well.
So David told you seven minutes, right?
Yeah. I am going to be outrunning the gavel.
Just kidding, just kidding.
I think I have it inside of 50. So my, I am not going to, you've seen this before, most of what I'm going to tell you, the only really new information is going to be about the community feedback that we got. But I am going to, just kind of, for the sake of people who are maybe watching at home or people who are here who don't understand, kind of, go through some of the background, kind of, back to why we're here and why we're looking for a solution. One of the things about the feedback that, that we did get was there seemed to really be an understanding out in the community about the need for our building. And I don't think I got a single question or anybody asking about that or taking issue with that. So I'm going to spend, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time talking about the actual site plan or any of that stuff. I am going to talk about just sort of, just kind of historically, I and a lot of other people who work at the Police Department and people who've been in this community for a while. I came to the department in 1999, and I was, like a lot of people, I was told that our building up there was a temporary facility. And the, I talk about moving the ball down the field a lot when, when it comes to this topic. And this ball has not moved down the field, really, the whole time I've worked here until this last year, when some members of this commission and the last commission okayed the purchase of the Mount Pleasant property, which most, most people are aware of that purchase, 8.3 acres, literally right in the middle of the community. It's flat. At the time that we started looking into purchasing it, there were some, I know there was a school that was looking at purchasing it, there were some developers that were looking at purchasing it from the school district. And I think we really, the city got a great deal in what we got there, and it really fits this project. The, some of, and we, in this process of where we are today, we had some help. Some of the help came from an architectural firm that the city paid money to do a needs assessment. Basically, they tell you, they take your size, they take your demographic, they take your city, they compare it to national standards, state and local standards, and kind of help you come up with an educated opinion. kind of help you come up with an educated opinion as to what you will need today and the kinda needs that you're gonna need in the future, what sites would and would not work for you, uh, so you're not just kind of guessing. You're, you're really getting a professional's take on, on what your, uh, what your project is gonna be. One of the things that, that, that firm helped us with was this site plan. And this, uh, the purchase of the property came up while we were already in the middle of our needs assessment, so we kinda shifted gears and said, hey, we have a specific site, can you start looking into that site and its suitability for a police department? After a lot of feedback, uh, you know, their job is to give us their professional opinion about the site. They did not grow up here, they did not go to the Mount Pleasant School. Their job is to just look at buildings and say, the smart money is doing X. And what X basically came to was that whatever you do at this site, uh, there's a reason that the school stopped using that building and, and it is probably not in your best interest to make it a police department. We also had them look at other potential uses, whether or not it would be a replacement of a city hall. And in a nutshell, uh, if you want the long version, email me or call me, but they said no. So we came up with, essentially, they came up with what was a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 project. The reason Phase 2, I believe, is important is I think that as we're doing things, we have to not just plan the needs for today, but we need to look into 10, 15, 20, 50 years so people are looking back and going, you know what, they really thought about this, and I'm glad that they planned for the future. Phase 1, uh, that shows, that vertical line right there is Lynn Avenue. The, uh, we did have Phase 1 and 2, one of them has a roundabout, one does not, just showing that we're not discriminating. This, uh, this option shows the, what would be the proposed police facility. Uh, the existing annex building that you see there would stay there, and then the dollar amounts that people have seen as to what this project would be include the demolition of the current building, uh, without obviously leaving the annex building there. But then the parking lot, secure parking, and then essentially a lot of green space, some treatment of, whether it's a baseball field, basketball court or whatever, and then what would be kind of a picnic area that you see there, much like, um, what you see at Wesley Lynn Park there at the other end. And then, uh, Phase 2, this is down the road. The site just makes sense that it's, it's more property than you need for just a police department. And so after a police department's done, what other future needs is the city gonna have? And, uh, that is a, an idea of where we could put a, um, city hall. Um, the, uh, one of the things, I'll just say briefly about the site that has been very, uh, that we didn't really see coming, I, I expected a lot of feedback about the building, uh, and we got a lot more feedback about, not the Mount Pleasant School itself, but what are you gonna do about the green space? We walk our dogs there, we, my kids play baseball there, and it was really important to the community that, that we maintained that. And that was information that we passed on to McKinsey, our architect firm, early, saying this can't be a collection on this site of parking lots and buildings. It has to fit the community in the same way that the school has for years and years. Excellent. And this is just another overhead view of, of that building. One thing, I'm not gonna go into this, but I am gonna say something that's very important about this project, is I don't want anybody to think that we need a police building because those of us working there need new shiny offices. Uh, that, that is not what a, a building is about. There are aspects that affect how we do our job that are very specific to the community. And the building is a tool that we use to do our building. Uh, I could go into great length about that. I'll, I'll say that, as you look at this, one of the big deals for me right now, uh, that makes me nervous, especially in today's times, is, uh, secure parking. We're at a, um, building right now where there's no secure parking for our staff, and we're kind of at a place where we know that there is potentially a building in the future. And it makes no sense to spend six figures on a fence right now, uh, when, when we would be tearing it down at some point in the near future. But it, it, there's just no good solution there. So these are the kinds of things that we're thinking about just from an employee perspective. There's a lot more from the perspective of what people get as a community member here. I'll just briefly just say glass is a big thing to us, the whole idea about transparency in government, and people wanting to come in to the police department, see what we're doing and us seeing out in the community, uh, in this, uh, in the same way. Next slide. So my purpose in, in this, I, and I'll answer any questions if there are more at the end, if you haven't, or at any time, about the project itself. Uh, but what we're really here to talk about, assuming that everybody understands the need, uh, is that ultimately, what I'm asking you is if you will approve a, uh, utility fee, uh, that would be $6.50 a month, and I'm gonna talk about how we came to that. So why a fee? Looking at the problem that, and obviously makes sense, the ball hasn't moved down the field because it's, it's money. And where do you come up with more money? Uh, the reality is, there is no way that the general fund is ever gonna pay for a new building. And so at some point, it, it's about more money. And, um, and that usually stops most people when they're trying to move a ball down, down any field. But what we did do is think, you know, is there a fresh look that we can take at this, knowing that there are a couple issues that exist inside of the city? What are those? One, I started hearing, uh, a lot about, uh, as I got into a different position about untaxed properties. And that one of the, the issues that Oregon City has compared to other, uh, cities is that we have a lot of untaxed property here. There's over 40 county facilities here. Uh, what, what goes hand in hand with a lot of those untaxed properties is there is a lot of workload that comes to our police department from a lot of these untaxed properties. Everybody who gets arrested in Clackamas County Jail gets out of jail in Oregon City. Everybody who ends up on probation in Clackamas County comes to their probation office in Oregon City. Mental health, public health, uh, the courthouse, a lot of things that we have to contend with that other people do not. And it's a significant burden, uh, to the city. So what can we do, this is the, the things that we're looking at, what could we do to come up with some kind of a solution? We looked at some other cities, uh, and found that Medford had had a utility fee for a period of time, and Gresham, I think at the time was in the process of passing their fee, and they have a, a fee now. Now that, the Medford fee, uh, was for staff, it's for police and fire, and at the time, I believe, was 260. They added $2 to it for a total, I believe, 461, uh, for that extra $2 just to pay for their building project. And then Gresham's is 750, and that's strictly just for police officers for paying staff. We liked that not just property owners were paying the cost of this fee, uh, the work that the police department does in this infrastructure, which is, uh, the public safety facility and the court and code enforcement are all things that these other entities should also have a hand in helping to pay. Essentially, more people paying less than, uh, just, uh, the, uh, taxpayer, or excuse me, the property taxpayer. It's gonna feel like you're ripping a Band-Aid off, but we're maybe making the Band-Aid a little smaller, if that makes any sense. Um, and, and if you're curious about a bond, looking at the same money, if we were just to go out for a conventional bond and go on a property owner, the, um, average home price in Oregon City, $268,000, that would be roughly $10 a month or $120 annually. So, community engagement. The, um, the original plan was to come before you, and, and we talked at the, uh, the goal-setting retreat, and then to go out into the public and see what everybody thought. And I knew full well that if we went out into the community and they said, we hate this, I was gonna come back and tell you that they hated it. The only way that this plan works is, it's the community's money, it's the community's property, and it's the community's building. And the only way the whole thing works is if the entire community, uh, liked it, uh, and overwhelmingly so. Uh, there are obviously people who do not like it, but I can tell you that overwhelmingly, uh, and I'm gonna talk about some of the feedback, both the good and the bad, that people are in full support of this. It, it got to where after a couple meetings, I was giving people a caveat. I started at the outset. I said, everything that I just told you about, how it's their money. And I said, I don't need head nodding and agree, agreeing with me because you don't wanna disagree with me because we're sitting here. I need you to give me the negative so I can take that back to the commission, 'cause maybe, maybe there's a negative that we can fix. And, uh, it was funny, actually, the, the first time I said that, I go through this whole dialogue trying to get some negative feedback, and, and a guy raises his hand, and I thought, well, here comes some negative. And he said, uh, you guys can leave that walking path around the, uh, the green space. We did get some negative feedback later. Um, we hit just about every neighborhood association. There were one or two that did not have meetings inside of the last couple months, and we were not able to get into them. Uh, we hit the Oregon City Business Alliance Board. I think you saw in your packet somewhere that Kent Ziegler wrote a, uh, letter on behalf of the Oregon City Business Alliance, uh, in favor of this fee in our project. Uh, we had, uh, Oregon City Women's Club, we had a table out at the State of the City. Uh, we had an open house at the police department that was very well attended. We did a, uh, a very in-depth, took about an hour to go through, uh, the, the project, the fee, uh, and we actually did, gave everybody a tour of the entire police facility. I think we had 45 people, there was the number. Uh, I recognized about five people that you see at other meetings, and, uh, of the other 40, I, there were, most of them I'd never seen anywhere, and some of them I'd seen once or twice. But we had a really good turnout, and the intent of that was anybody who missed their neighborhood meeting or did not participate in their neighborhood association would have an opportunity to come and get kind of the full story from us. One of the other things that we did, uh, we know that this is an impact to a lot of the, uh, apartment complexes in town, and some of those are, uh, well, and there's a couple of them that are 100% low-income housing. We knew this would be a significant impact to them. So I wrote a letter, uh, to each of them, just kinda giving them notice that this was potentially coming down the road, uh, which part of our plan was that this would be, uh, started, our, we were, our ask was gonna be July 1. We changed that, and I'll talk about that later. And so we, we went out and, and Chris spent some time kinda answering questions for those folks as well. Feedback, like I said, was overwhelmingly positive, overwhelmingly positive. I can tell you every negative comment I received, and it, they're on the next page, literally every negative comment that I got. I don't have every positive one, I have themes, because there were some things that came, uh, at, at every meeting. The number one comment that we heard, uh, that was an ask, was that there was a guarantee that the fee would sunset when the construction cost was paid. Uh, I know that we have, in some of the city manager's reports, have passed that on to you, and you're aware of that. Uh, we have also, um, addressed that in the code that we wrote that is part of your packet. One thing people really overwhelmingly said is they really liked the transparency and the simplicity of the, the plan. Here's the fee, here's the building, when the building's built, the fee goes away. And there's no, there's no real mystery beyond that. You, uh, it's, it's simple, and people like that simple aspect of it. They really liked the fairness of the plan. I think they like the fact that we were thinking about that, that we were thinking about the people who own property, and, uh, they, overwhelmingly, people thought, you know, obviously they're gonna like paying, uh, paying less than paying more. But they thought it was a very fair and well-thought-out plan. They also thought the higher rate for a shorter duration, the 650 a month versus 550, just to shorten the amount of time, uh, by five years is our, kind of our target. They liked that idea. They really liked the site plan, um, the pictures that you just saw. We kind of got some of the comments that you remember from the library project, where people kinda fell in love with that initial picture. And, uh, and I had several people say, we don't care what it looks like, as long as it looks like that picture right there. And, uh, and we love, we love how that came together too. You know, keep in mind the, the inside of, that those are just external pictures, we have not designed any project that would come after lengthy, uh, public input. There was some, uh, a couple comments about wanting to make sure that this fee would go specifically to the construction of the building, that they wouldn't find out later. Well, we also have been buying five or six patrol cars with it or something like that, and that has been addressed in the language of the fee as well. And like I said before, the, we did not run into people who said, we don't need a new police facility. That, that word has been out for a while, and I think people understand that. Negative feedback, um, and I, negative meaning people not liking it. It's, um, negative only in that sense. It's feedback just like all of it. Um, there was an editorial piece in the newspaper that I think you might have seen. Um, I went and met with, um, the, uh, the citizen who wrote it, had a great conversation for about an hour, uh, I think. And basically, his concern and the concern in the editorial was, are, are you guys doing some kind of an end-around on the, uh, on the bond process, the fact that you should be going out to the community? And my response to that was, this, and it did come up a couple times, people said, you know, we're gonna start putting money away for this project. What if you go out to the public in a few years for a bond and they say no? That's why we just keep saving money. At, at the end of the day, we're moving that ball down the field, whether it's through a bond or through some other issue that comes up, or, or maybe we save money for 10, 15 years and then we just build it outright. But nonetheless, we're putting money away and, and moving that ball down the field. And, but it also gave me some great advice that we used, um, with Mr. Kibysman, making sure that the, uh, the language of the, uh, code is very clear, it was actually Kerry Richter, I think, that, that helped us write it, um, that the fee stands on its own, it is not tied to anything else, there's no mandate about a bond or anything. But I, I will just say, the reason that I mentioned a bond was just in full transparency. I didn't want people to come later and go, okay, you started this fee and now you're talking about a bond. I wanted people to just know upfront, look, we're, these are the options that we're looking at, and that's what we said to everybody in the community. It's a fee down the road, we might come ask you for a bond. If you say no, we'll keep saving. But, um, there was one just general email complaining about more government taxes and fees in general. I understand. Um, there was one comment about, uh, right-of-way ordinance and pass-through fees, and there's another fee on top of that. Okay? Um, I'll, I'll go with the last one before I get to the Section 42 properties. An email to, uh, to billing came in from a smaller apartment complex owner just saying, hey, this is, this is another fee that we're gonna have to pass on to our apartment complex owners. I did get, in response to the letters that we sent out, I got a, a phone call about, I, I didn't even know what Section 42 properties were, and apparently, um, there are two of them in Oregon City, there used to be three. The one where the building slid down into the canyon, that was the third. Uh, the two that we have now are Kingsbury Heights, which is on Marjory Lane behind Kmart, and the other one is the Rosewood Terrace Apartments at 235 Pearl Street. Uh, I do not know, I believe they're both 100% low-income housing. What I know about Section 42 is that, I don't think they still offer this, but I know that there were tax credits were given and maybe some other benefits to developers who built low-income housing apartment complexes, and it's tied, if you look on their website, it's tied basically to somebody's income. And the owner of that larger apartment complex, actually, his manager called and said, hey, they're not allowed to raise apartment rents to pass this on. This just comes out of the bottom line of our owner, and it's a local owner. A lot of these apartment complexes are owned by people in California and stuff, but this is a local owner. I did some digging around about Section 42. Uh, I talked to somebody named Jennifer Marchand, I don't know if I'm butchering her name, she's a lead compliance officer for Oregon Housing and Community Services in Salem, and she, uh, was a wealth of information. And she's the one who kind of explained what this Section 42 was. She said, a lot of these apartment complexes, and I'm not saying these ones, uh, I do not know, but she said, a lot of what these people did was they would sell these tax credits and use that money for whatever they wanted to. It's like a commodity, you can literally sell that tax credit if you want to. But, but her take on it was, the people who went into these Section 42 properties go into it knowing the deal. They know upfront that they're going into low housing, low-income housing. They should know that part of their business plan is that fees and different utilities are gonna raise, and it's the cost of doing business. She told me that these things, these fees can be passed on in their gross rent calculation, but they cannot if the apartment managers are already charging the max gross, uh, rent calculation for whatever these properties are. Uh, but in, in her mind, she said, cities all across Oregon have different fees that come in. She said, our office has no issue with what you're doing, and we don't think that you're putting some surprising or undue burden on these apartment complex owners. And the other thing I'll say, 'cause I don't, I, I understand the position they're in, but I, I do also wanna say, if you just look in comparison, when we're talking about the bones of the whole project and why it's fair, uh, that, that complex in particular, I'll just, this year... year, we've been to that complex 93 times, 93 calls as of the day that I had the stats done in April. That complex, I think, has 230 units. There's another complex that's bigger. Pioneer Ridge has 260 units. We've been to them 38 times. So if you think about, we go there a lot, and so this is kind of what we're, this is part of the problem, is having everybody who's using us pay for part of that. At the same time, local owner, guy doing business, I understand that it's, but it's going to hit somebody harder than others. There's no plan that we'll ever come up with that is not going to.
So let me ask you a question there. So who actually pays at that particular apartment complex? Who actually pays the rent for, do the tenants pay the rent, or is it the feds or the state paying the rent?
As far as I know, the tenants are paying the rent. It is, it is a, but it's a controlled rent.
Right.
You look on there, and if you're making X, you pay Y for rent, if you're making...
Good.
So future considerations, the Mount Pleasant property, we have already spent a pretty good chunk of money on roof leaks and ceiling. My point in saying that is, we've got a renter for the next three years, which is fantastic. I don't know how often we'll have, we have somebody who wants a short-term rent, they're looking for a property of their own, so that's going to help us offset the costs. But this, it is, I do not believe in the best interest of the city to have a vacant building for the next 20 years and to not come up with some kind of a plan to be advancing this ball down the road, because that vacant, empty building, old building, is a liability. So we're going to keep renting where we can, like we're doing now, and we're looking at different options inside the city to use that annexed building. Almost done there. Our plan, we are going to, in a couple of years, once we've been saving and showing that this is a consistent revenue source, we're going to explore options, and I think one of the options will be to see what, whatever that commission at the time, and what the public thinks about the possibility of going out and seeking their approval for a bond. If they don't like that, another option is just to keep saving until we've got enough money for the construction cost, but nonetheless, we're moving the ball. The last thing I'm going to say before I ask for questions is, we did, looking with staff, somebody in Billing talked about some other increases that were coming in, in the utility fee rates, July 1. There's some cost of living stuff. There's, I think, a few bucks with P M U F or something like that. And so we talked about graduating this. Okay, let's, in July 1, let's do a couple dollars and maybe graduate it up till January 1, and we ultimately thought, why don't we just, not graduate, let's just put it off. Let's put it off six months, and then we'll start it in January instead of July, just to kind of ease the increases to everybody who's going to have to pay for this. That would also give us time, we'll notify them and give them time to kind of, knowing that it's at least six months out, to prepare for that and adjust accordingly. So that's the conclusion. I, the last, I'm going to say one more thing. When you kind of plan a project and you start moving forward with a group of people, sometimes you start getting away from the start point, and a project looks maybe less appealing, or you start identifying a bunch of holes in the ship or something. That's not been the case in this. The site plan, I really believe that it's a great plan. I think the fee's a great plan, and I think that the overwhelming feedback that we've got in the community has done nothing but prove that out. If you have any questions, let me know.
So this is not a public hearing, Bill, is that right?
It is not a public hearing. You're not required to hold a public hearing. You can take testimony from the public.
Okay. So I think we'll hold questions from the commission, and we'll take the speakers that we have on the list. Oh, there's John. He was hiding back there. So I got John Behan and Representative Brent Barton. Sure, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Holliday and Commissioners. For the record, I am Brent Barton. I live at 410 Jefferson Street in Oregon City.
Just say Oregon City.
And, sorry, there's a certain formality in Salem, I guess, to which I've grown accustomed. I'm here to speak in support of the Community Safety Advance Fee, and I want to be clear at the outset that I'm here in my capacity as a citizen of Oregon City, not, I'm not wearing my state representative hat. I view my job down there as to advocate for Oregon City and Gladstone and other communities I represent in Salem. I try very hard not to meddle in your affairs, the affairs that are justly local government. I've never appeared in front of you, despite whatever opinions I may have had, in my capacity as a citizen, but I feel that strongly about this project. I think that this is, what you've just heard, the public process behind it is impeccable. In fact, I think it's a model, really, for how this should be done. I think that the fee itself is narrowly tailored to an essential government service. And finally, on a personal note, and I suspect many people in this room can relate to what I'm about to say, the death of Officer Libke was by far the most emotional and intense experience I have had as a public servant, and I hope it will remain as such. I hope to never go through something like that again. I think we can all relate. But the symbolism of having a state-of-the-art public safety center named for Robert Libke be constructed just a few blocks from where he fell in the line of duty really means a lot to me, and I think it means a lot to a lot of people in this community. And so I urge your support of this fee, and if I can answer any questions or be a resource in any way, please do so.
Thanks, Brent. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
John?
Thank you. I'm sorry, it's, got me all emotional now. So, my name's John Behan. I have the pleasure and the honor of being an Oregon City Police Officer. Also, currently, I'm the Oregon City Police Employees Association President. First off, I would echo what Chief Band said about the safety things, you know, crime victims having to tell their story next to where we're registering sex offenders, unsecured parking, all the reasons that, as Commissioners, you're well aware of all these deficiencies. But as most of you are aware, maybe, I know for sure Rocky is, my father was hired with his father at the Oregon City Police Department in 1978, around then. They both assisted in the moving into the temporary facility located at 321 Romelney Road in 1980, '81 timeframe.
What's your definition of temporary?
So when Chief Band talks about moving the ball down the field, I appreciate, Chief Band was hired about three months before I was, and that was the mantra when we got hired, was, "Hey, we're going to get a new police department in two years, four years, five years." But really, there was no plan put into motion until this last year, and kudos to the former Commissioner and you guys for taking that leap of purchasing the property. And now, before you, we have a means to really finance that, because that's the important thing, as we all know, is the money, and an equitable solution needs to be found. Like Chief Band mentioned, you know, I worked in patrol now. I've had several different jobs at the Police Department, and there are many users of our services, just subjectively, from my perspective, who aren't necessarily property owners. And so I would echo the sentiment that, you know, people paying their fair share, and this appears to me to be a very simple way to pass that cost along, a cost that we're going to have to pay. And getting into the safety, obviously, we deal with people who are mentally ill, are having crisis, things like that. We've already had occasions in the past where one gal in particular has cut the tires on several cars in our parking lot. You know, I've had an instance where the same gal armed herself in the ER at Portland Adventist Hospital, and attacked me with ballpoint pens. But the fact of the matter is, is those folks are out there, and obviously, she's an extreme example, so obviously, we need to update our facility. Like Chief Band mentioned, it really doesn't make sense to add fence to our already inadequate facility. What we need to focus on is how we move forward, and I think this is a very good first step.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank both of you for your service.
Yes, thank you.
So next up, we have Mark Fleming and the ever-present William Gifford.
Hi, my name's Mark Fleming. I've been a homeowner in Oregon City for a little over 15 years, and in that time, I've seen the city make some good decisions to help the community, you know, grow, and I think this is a good decision to give us a better police department. And as a homeowner, I like the idea of how the fee is structured, so that it's just not the burden on the property owners. And being fiscally conservative, I like the idea of paying it off in 15 years and saving the interest. So that's what I'm here for.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gifford?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is William Gifford. I live in Oregon City. I've been pleased to be working with Chief Band and the gang and attending a lot of the presentations on this subject for a long time, and I'm really speaking enthusiastically in support of it. I did have, because this is the first time I've actually seen the ordinance, I did have a couple of questions that came to mind. One is, I didn't notice any comment in the ordinance regarding home-based businesses. It talks about business for users requiring a business license, the fee shall be collected annually, blah, 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 and then residences pay also. Would home-based businesses get ding twice?
The intent, no, no.
I didn't think that they would. It didn't seem clear in the ordinance itself, and I would suggest that there could be some clarity on that particular point. That's one comment that I had. Secondly, I very much appreciate the explanation as to why we aren't ramping it up like we did on the P M U F. It makes a lot of sense. I hope that we use that time wisely to inform the citizens of what's coming, you know. The ramping it up, you know, people take the bite, yeah, and they grumble, you know, and then they get used to it, and then they start grumbling about it going up, you know. So this is just going to be one grumble, but I think that we need to use that deferred time from not ramping it up to make sure that they understand what's coming clearly, so that transparency. And the last comment that I had was, I want to make sure that our, let me, how can I phrase this, our brethren in community municipality governments, the county.
Okay. Thank you.
Is not going to be pushing back on the fact that they're going to be charged this fee, too, as well as all other businesses, properties in Oregon City, and I want to make sure that the county isn't going to say, "Hey, you know," because I'm tired of throwing rocks at each other, and I want to make sure that, have we spoken to the county at all about this?
The largest impact that I, that we saw was public housing. There are, up in the Heights, as most people call them, that was the biggest impact of a county facility that we were worried about, obviously because of their clientele as well. I sent the information, one of the first people we sent to was their housing manager, who had sent the information to their director, and they were in favor of our project.
But the B C C themselves?
Haven't talked to them.
Okay. I don't want to blindside anybody on this, and I want to make sure that...
I can add a little something to that. A couple of days ago, actually, four days ago, we had a regional Clackamas County City Managers Meeting here at Oregon City, where typically the host, there are 16 city managers across the county, and the county generally sends a deputy administrator or the administrator. The deputy was there. I talked about the fee there. I've talked about it multiple times in those meetings, where they've been invited and have been in attendance at different times during the meeting. A lot of my colleagues are really interested in how we're doing this. Most of them don't have the same compelling arguments that we have, just because most of them don't have $2 million in exempt properties off the tax rolls. So there's a little different dynamic there, but they're well informed of what we're doing, and they're aware of it.
Well, several of them have brand-new or fairly new police facilities, too.
I think it's a brilliant model. I really admire and respect the transparency and the community outreach and all this. I just want to make sure that we, that the county Commissioners, God bless them, don't come back and say, "Hey, this is another zing you're going to stick us with," because we are going to be expecting them to contribute.
Thanks, William.
Thank you.
Yep, that's my comment.
Commissioners, just to respond to the point he made, if you look at the bottom of page 1, 1336040B, it says, "A single fee shall be assessed where a home-occupied business and residential dwelling unit are located within the same residential structure."
Oh, thank you. It's covered.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, Dan Fowler and the city manager.
I wasn't sure you'd let me talk when the Commission started debating. I have one person I want to credit here tonight. Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Dan Fowler, business owner here in Oregon City. Great presentation, Chief. In thinking about this, and in thinking about just years of service, and listening to the public over the years, and what they asked for, I think they asked for government, excuse me, to be fair, to be creative, to be businesslike. We've all heard those terms, and they expect us to communicate clearly and be transparent and upfront. And I sat here and listened to this presentation tonight, and every box is checked. Every box is checked, and I think the public, because of that, will support this, as you've indicated already. So, great presentation, and I wanted to add my support to it as a business owner here.
So just a quick question, Dan.
Yeah.
So how many, you're going to pay this in several different places, right? How many meters do you have?
I have no idea.
Really? But several?
Yeah, several. But when you look at it in terms of a fairness question, it's, in my mind, it's much better to pay a $6.50 fee than a $10 fee. It's better to move it off the property tax, onto a fee-based system. It spreads the burden. It does everything you talked about, spreads the burden, to where there's a fairness question. That's really the fairness issue, is that you're, everything from churches to nonprofit agencies, to governments, to schools, to hospitals, everybody's going to pay. Everybody uses a police department. That's the way to go. Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak on this before we move on? Seeing none, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a couple of people I want to thank tonight that I don't think the public is aware, and maybe some of the Commissioners might not be. Before I do that, though, I want to thank Chief Band and the Police Department, also our finance staff. This was really a team effort, everybody from the community development, even Parks, when we talked about this in our executive staff meetings for months and months, so, and a couple of different Commissions. I also want to give credit to my friend and mentor, longtime city manager from the city of Medford, when I was the city manager in Grants Pass. I stole this idea from him, and I gave it to Jim, and he made it better. So I really, really appreciate the leadership. Mike was the first, Mike Dial was his name. Medford was the first city, I believe, in Oregon to use this method, and they had similar tax-exempt property situation that we have, and I remember filing that away, thinking, someday I might need this, and I didn't know how soon that was going to be. So credit to innovators and city management in Oregon. The other person I want to thank is, as you know, we have made decisions in executive session about the purchase of the Mount Pleasant property, and as the city attorney...
Discussed in executive session.
Yeah, excuse me, yes. Reached consensus and made discussions in executive session about that property, because we were negotiating the purchase price and making decisions about whether to do it. This was not always as apparent as it is now, and it was a difficult time. We were struggling reaching consensus. There was, we didn't really have any idea how the public was going to react at the time. Lots of folks went to school there. There were certain concerns about the historic nature of the property, and on and on. There was one person, a former Commissioner, Betty Mum, who was, and I can disclose these executive session comments, because the reason for the exception has now expired since we've purchased the property. So once the reason for the exception expires, you can talk about these things in public. So that's the legal barrier I need to get over before I talk about this. But we were all grappling with this decision, and Commissioner Mum said to us, "Is there any way that we can put both a police station and a city hall on the same property?" Because we knew it was too mu, it was really too large of a property for a police building, and too large for a city hall, and we needed a place for both. And we had a hard time figuring out if it was really a good enough value for us to move just one department there. We knew we wanted to co-locate our facilities, because right now, our customers have to go to two or three different places to get something done many times, and that's going to continue until we can consolidate our services on a single campus. And it was that comment from Commissioner Mum that broke all of us over to the, it broke the gridlock that we were experiencing. It made a clear picture for me, for Jim, for all of us, and she's not here tonight, but I just want to shout out to Commissioner, former Commissioner Betty Mum, for her insight and vision and contribution to that decision. And with that, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Questions, comments, concerns?
Well, I'm ready to roll the ball down the field here, but I do have...
Well, I'm ready to roll the ball down the field here, but I do have to register my disappointment that the Oregon City Optimist Club was not on the list of visitations there, Chief Band, so, you know.
Well, you're optimist. They already knew you were ahead.
Yeah, it's very nice, very nice.
We went to the optimists as well. Great breakfast.
Commissioner Polly?
I think it's trying to move the ball down the field, and I think everything worked out great from finding the perfect site, I feel. It does have a lot of meaning, and it's very near and dear to a lot of people in the community, that site, and it's great planning for the future, and I think this fee is fair.
Tricia Smith? Two minutes.
I was just going to say, if we start talking, I might go on for a long time. I will just say that, you know, one of the reasons I ran for city commission was because of the police department and the desperate need for staffing in 2008. The police department has come a long way, as has the city in that time. Of all the things that I thought we'd be talking about, about the police department, a new building was not one of the things that I had thought I would see while I was still sitting here, and I'm excited about it. You know, it's, we still have, you know, time to get, you know, it's not, we have a library, we have all these projects, the amount of projects that this city is dealing with right now is huge, and this commission and the past commission has done a lot of hard work to make sure that we have a plan for the growth of the city and where these services are going to go, and I think this, the purchase of Mount Pleasant, both for the police department's future and the city's future, was probably one of the biggest decisions that we've made for the future of the city, and I'm excited to be a part of it, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition.
Thanks. So the only thing I have to say that hasn't really been said is, I think Oregon City, in the long run, has done a good job of telling the truth. So way back when we annexed the fire district, we made a promise that we weren't going to eat up the differential between the district and the city's taxable rate, and we've kept that promise. And so I think I can safely say to the people out there that when we say, we're going to take this and we're going to use it for what we intend it to, and we're going to stop charging it when we're done, we have a history of telling the truth, and the way we build trust with the public is by doing things over and over again, doing what you say you're going to do, taking, you know, closing out the fee or closing a district or whatever it is. And so, you know, you have my word, if nothing else, that this is the plan and this is what we're going to do. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. Let's roll that ball down the field. I move the introduction ordinance number 15-1005, an ordinance amending the Oregon City Municipal Code to include Chapter 13.36, Community Safety Advancement Fee.
Mr. Kabeizman?
Second.
Oh. Go ahead, second.
Ordinance number 15-1005, an ordinance amending the Oregon City Municipal Code to include Chapter 13.36, Community Safety Advancement Fee.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Passes.
Next on the list. Oh, oh no. Here it is. So is 15-223, First Reading of Ordinance Number 15-1004, an ordinance amending Title 9.12, Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency, repealing Chapter 9.12.010, Disturbing the Peace and Acting With Chapter 9.12.020, Disturbing the Peace. Man, that's a mouthful. Who's staff?
Chief Band.
Oh. Or the gym.
Still glowing. So, we, the noise ordinance. Thank you. We came before you on the works, at a work session and talked about a noise ordinance, and there was some feedback. Greg, you want to come forward? Captain Frye?
We get to hear Greg talk?
He just loves speaking in public, so.
My most favorite part of my job.
And in a nutshell, we made the changes that you wanted. Greg's going to just talk about them briefly, about what those specific ones were, just as a refresher, and there's really not much else to talk about.
On February the 10th, we had the work session, and there were five things that you either wanted to change, remove, or add. And one of the things that wanted to be changed was the noisy animals, the time moving at from 15 to 10 minutes, and that's in your, it's been created on there now. The second item was creating a construction that the mayor wanted, and that piece is in there. Mr. Kabeizman authored that. The third one is in the exemptions on page two, item C. Commissioner Smith wanted to add something in there about festivals, so there was a piece added on the end that says, "And events operated under a valid city issued permit." So that was added. Number four was an item that was removed, two items that were removed, which was commercial construction equipment and ice cream trucks. And then finally, the fifth one was under the authority, which is a rather long piece that talks about how a complaint can be, citations either reissued or a complaint be forwarded to the court, to the city prosecutor to review and decide whether or not a complaint would move forward. That's all.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So the, we have no noise ordinance right now, just kind of to recap. And so what we wanted, there was a couple conversations about things like noise meters, and what, this ordinance that we have, we believe, is a tool that we've never had. In most circumstances, our goal, and what we, we generally get these fixed between neighbors now without this, and the nice thing about this is, is when we're trying to problem-solve with neighbors, is we need a tool to be able to, trying to find a nice word to say, threaten them with, but that's essentially what it is. You guys figure it out, or you come up with some kind of a solution here, or you could end up getting cited, and we think that this is something that, we know that our municipal court judge likes it, our prosecutor likes it. We've had some, a lot of feedback from some specific people in the community, and we've also gotten feedback from, just in some of the neighborhoods, and the chief's advisory have talked to them about it. And for everybody who wants a very rigid code, I think there seems to be many more people who just want something that is a little more, a little more laid-back in its approach, and this is something that we're going to, we'll give it a shot, see how it works, and if it's not working, if it's not the tool that we need it to be, then we'll come back and try and adjust it. But I think this really gets us to where we're going to be able to fix just about every issue that we have come up. Do you have any questions?
I have, I have one question. Mr. Bus submitted a letter, which, while, he's had this discussion with me before. The only real question I have that has to do with him is from section, his first paragraph, which says that it does not clearly prohibit unreasonable noise on private outdoor property. Apparently, everything is inside. Is that, is there any issue about enforcing outdoor, Bill?
I don't think so. And let me read you the provision that we're talking about.
Okay.
Basically, "Unreasonable making of noise in a boarding facility, dwelling, place of business, or other structure, or upon any public street, park, or other place or building." And focus on two things, you know. First is, what's a dwelling, and, you know, that it can go outside of the house and into the residence, and even if that's not an issue, we've got street, park, or other place or building. And I think, you know, the other place is a...
Back to you.
All right. Anybody else have anything?
Well, continuing on with Mr. Bus's letter here, Mayor Holliday, he also has a couple more items on here. Did you want to talk about those at all?
No.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
If you want to talk about it, feel free...
No, I was just wondering, you know, he submitted this letter, I didn't know if Chief had an opportunity to see this.
Yes, I can respond. So...
I don't think we need to. I think the fact is, is that Mr. Bus has worked, you know, long and hard on this, and we've come to a place where we've decided that we're in one place, and he's going to be in another place, and I think we just have to agree to disagree and move on. Okay? So, anybody else? So Katie, you had something?
Yes. So I just want to enter into the record, on the code itself, on page three of the ordinance, there was a scrivener's error under Section G, motor vehicles. That first line, "The parking of any motor vehicles of 10,000 pounds," and it says G-C-W, and it should be read G-V-W. That scrivener's error will actually be corrected at your next reading, but I want to read that into the record now so that you are aware that there is a scrivener's error on there. I don't believe that holds you up from doing the first reading for this evening, but I want you to be aware of it.
Anything else that I would entertain a motion?
The move we do, 15-233, First Reading of Ordinance Number 15-1004, and Ordinance Amending Title 9.12, Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency, repealing Chapter 9.12.010, Disturbing the Peace and Acting With Chapter 9.12.020, Disturbing the Peace.
With the correction.
With correction.
Second.
Send the move by Commissioner Shaw, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there any further discussion? Bill?
Ordinance number 15-1004, an ordinance amending Title 9.12, Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency, repealing Chapter 9.12.010, Disturbing the Peace and Acting With Chapter 19, 9.12.020, Disturbing the Peace.
Katie?
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Passes.
So with that, I think we're going to take a five-minute break before we move on to the rest of this. Move on to introduction of ordinance number 15-100, yeah, 1006, Adopting Amendments to Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 13.12, Stormwater Management. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor and city commissioners. This is yet another topic that's familiar to you. We had a work session earlier, no, last month, sorry, in April, where we went over the stormwater design standards, and with that, we're asking tonight to look at the code changes that are aligned with those storm standards. So Martin's here in the audience. Brian Caldwell helped us with this. There were several staff involved in this. If we've got questions, Martin can step on up and ask them. But really, the purpose of this Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 13 code change is really to make some changes to some of the policies and requirements that we have for how we manage new development and how we ask them to deal with stormwater runoff associated with their developments. So the idea, and we've listed several of these in bullet points here, is to reduce runoff that might be destructive to the natural stream systems and might overwhelm our downstream piped facilities. So we also want to reduce erosion control, and really, it's about reducing pollution. So there's a lot of things in our standards that these code changes will then allow for, which involve green development, swales, infiltration trenches, those kind of things. So the code changes, I, we've given you both a red line version and a accepted version. We're asking you to, I think, recommend, we're recommending that the city commission approve the first reading of this ordinance and adopt the amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. And again, we're available for questions. Carrie Richter worked closely with Martin and team to draft these code changes, so...
We'll just have to do with the full package.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have the documents now.
Yes.
I have my copy here.
I've got a copy as well.
This is the red line version. That's the full package.
Katie, they not have a screen at all, or... Okay. Have you rebooted your machine?
Mine is working, but I will definitely reboot it.
Yeah, I think it's communications between these and your machines causing the problem.
Mine's working fine.
You don't have vote cast on yours, do you?
No, I don't.
I think that's what the problem is.
It probably is.
It's stuck on the voting, yeah.
Martin went to make more copies.
Okay, so where were we, John?
Well, I was just saying that these code changes really just implement the, allow us to implement the stormwater standards, and code changes, I don't have the red lines in front of me anymore, but they're relatively straightforward. And see, we think of them as major changes to the code. It's really about the adoption of the standards, which in some cases are a little more restrictive, in other cases are, thank you, are not so restrictive, so...
Well, I think I saw that we had new ELO monitors in the back.
We do.
So maybe in the process, we can fix this, too. This is a first reading. This is a first reading. So does anybody have any questions?
No.
Then I'd entertain a motion.
Moved for the introduction of ordinance number 15-1006, Adopting Amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 13.12, Stormwater Management. Mr. Kabeizman?
Second.
Kabeizman? Second. Ordinance number 15-1006, an ordinance adopting amendments to Oregon City Municipal Code, Chapter 13.12, Stormwater Management.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
So 7G is Local Agency Agreement Number 30259 between the Oregon Department of Transportation ODOT and the City of Oregon City of... Mr. Lewis?
Thank you again. This is a local agency agreement. It's an agreement that we have, it's an adjustment to an agreement that we already have in place. What it really does is it disconnects the urban renewal commission from the maintenance obligations that go along with this project. As you hopefully have enjoyed Dunes, ninety-nine E between Dunes Drive and Clackamas River, it's a much better place to be now, so decorative lighting, new pavement, curbs, sidewalks, landscaping, gateway features, and so that project is essentially complete. We've still got some minor items that we're working through, and of course, the work with ODOT and final invoicing is still in the process. But this agreement maintains all the financial obligations and everything that was included in the original agreement, but it also includes the maintenance requirements. So, with respect to maintenance requirements, for instance, we're paying, this agreement requires us to maintain power to the signal and the street lighting along that boulevard. It requires us to maintain the ornamental fencing that's there now. Before, it was chain link fencing. We asked for special fencing, it was a better looking fence. ODOT wouldn't maintain that, so we've agreed to maintain that.
And we have to maintain the rusty railing, too, right?
Yes, we do. We've got to maintain the landscape areas, sidewalks and curbs that are damaged due to the tree roots, because, I don't know if you noticed, but if you might go a little further north, they don't necessarily do much with regard to street trees. We've wanted street trees along there, so. Removal graffiti, that's another thing that they require us to do, maintenance of the water quality facilities, and maintenance of the plaza there in front, near the McDonald's, and obviously, the stormwater facility on the other side of Dunes Drive. So, all things that we're anticipating, no surprises here, it's just cleaning up this agreement piece, and it also releases urban renewal from that maintenance responsibility.
Questions?
Move to approve local agency agreement number thirty-two fifty-nine between ODOT and City of Oregon City.
I second that.
Move by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Polly.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Polly.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
So, we're down to communications, but before we do that, I want to say something about the last little bit on the CSafe, and that is, is that Mr. Jesse Bus spent an inordinate amount of volunteer time working with Chief and the other folks to develop that new noise ordinance, and it was not my intention to give him short shrift on that. He was unable to attend the meeting tonight. Had he been here, I would have let him talk about whatever he wanted, but I think in explanation, there were a couple of items that, that Mr. Bus has hung up on, and that it's, the commission is, just isn't, you know, interested in entertaining at this point in time. But I did want to thank him for the amount of time that he spent working on this as a volunteer. So, with that, we'll go on to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was actually going to say something about that, too. I also want to thank citizen Denise McGriff. She and Mr. Bus were, they were passionate, but they were, they approached it the right way, they were delightful for us to work with, and they spent, as you said, an inordinate amount of time working with us. We listened to them, they listened to us, and to me, it was sort of a, almost a model of how you go about trying to change the law and make it better. At the end of the day, we have our officers out there now with one additional tool that I think will be effective, and I'm really, I'm just really thankful for the work that both he and Denise McGriff did with us. So, with that, most of my report was taken care of in a lengthy executive session, so the only thing I have left is a short update from Maureen Cole about the library.
Yay.
We're back.
We always liked it.
A little smiley.
Good evening, Commissioner, and Mayor. Can't talk, I never get to. I'm sorry. Brian and I want to tag team on this, because we've been attending all the building committee meetings. So, we want to let you know that the project is pretty much on target, on time, and on budget. Very important that it is on budget, because we have had to go through some value engineering, and we're still right there, and it's looking really good, so that will continue. We're at the, in the construction documents phase, we'll hit 50% next week, which is another target date for the contractors to look more closely at pricing. And then, 100% or 90% or whatever is in June, and so all of these dates trigger things happening. But we expect to come before you to ask for permission to move forward with the project and discuss the guaranteed maximum price. By July 15th or August 5th, that, those meetings, but more, most likely, will be the August 5th meeting, just because there's a lot to get together, and that works out really well with, from the schedule of the engineering for permitting and all that. So, more than likely, it's looking like we'll probably have groundbreaking on Saturday, August 8th. We're looking at about that ballpark. So, starting to get that laid out a little bit more closely. Let's see here, one of the things that we were asked to look at was the diseased elm trees, and we went back to the arborist to ask if we could, you know, use those at all, because it was our understanding before that if they were diseased, they were just out. After further investigation, what we have discovered is that the bark is completely, has to be destroyed according to a certain process, but the wood itself can be used.
Wow, very good. Awesome.
So, that opens up some possibilities. It's, the library is not really designed with like wood all over the inside or anything, so we may need to be pretty creative, but, and, you know, you still may get in there, and it may not turn into wood that's really great for certain things, but it opens up possibilities.
But that doesn't mean we can't harvest it and check it out, and even if we were to just, you know, cut it up into usable lumber and store it somewhere to, for use at, you know, a future, the police facility, or city hall, or someplace else, but to have some way to reutilize that, to keep that in town, I think that's.
Should be a gavel or two.
I think that's awesome.
Yeah. Yeah. So, Brian, what else do we need to tell these?
Never hurts to ask another question.
It never hurts to investigate a little bit deeper, yeah. That's what we have the consultants and experts for.
I think that was it, Mo, yeah.
Okay.
Those are the highlights.
Those are the highlights. So, we're moving forward, and, you know, we're getting more articulated in the process and more specific all the time, and just so you know, the library had its own May the Force Be With You event the other night, and 150 people attended.
Wow.
Thank you, Mo.
When that came across my email, I didn't quite get the joke, but now I do, so. Mr. Fraser, is that it?
That's it, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioners?
I have nothing tonight.
Again, working with Mo and the library still, and also attended South Fork.
South Fork budget, yeah.
And CIC. And we were all kind of involved, I think, with the city cleanup there on that Saturday and stuff, so. Lastly, you know, as Mr. Jerry Herman mentioned, I've been kind of working with him on the Clackamas River from the cove down to the confluence with the Willamette. We're trying to get a handle on, well, also with the boat ramp, and so we're going to be starting with Scott here, now that I've toured that whole thing and have a pretty good idea what's going on now, so. My big thing is, I'm going to sure like to see some of the vessels be able to travel up the Willamette to the legacy project, and possibly have a dock there at the, by the courthouse that used to be there, and maybe even be able to tie up there and stuff, so. But the way it is right now, the, there's quite a accumulation of material right there at the confluence that's going to stop any kind of a larger vessel coming through there, so. That's it.
Smith? Okay, so I have a couple things. One is fifteen dash two six six, the announcement of appointments to the Natural Resources Committee, and appointing Richard Craven and Brian Boyce for the term of January 1, 2015, to December 31, 2017, and the new appointment of Bill Clark for the term of January 1, 2015, to December 30 for 2017. I've done numerous things the last couple of weeks, working with David on trying to facilitate a change in governance of the Tri-City Sewer District, and so we've had several meetings with, on those kinds of things. I got an email from Commissioner Tootie Smith, Clackamas County, and asked that since Commissioner West is no longer serving, and she had been the representative to the Willamette Falls Locks Working Group, or whatever that group's name is, that they would like to have a representative from Oregon City attend those meetings. So, I'm asking which one of you wants to do it, because I've got more meetings on my schedule than I can do now.
When did they meet?
Yeah, that's a big.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to offer you an alternative, because Eric Underwood used to be a member of that committee, and he, just to ask him off the cuff if he would still be willing to serve if none of you wanted to, and he, I think he said yes, so. Do you have an alternative there?
Do you want to do that, Eric?
No, no, seriously, I think it's, I think it's legitimate.
Just hang on a second, let me look at this, if I can see this email from Tootie. Yeah.
He's up to speed already and familiar, because he, I think he served on there just until.
Three years.
Until a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Until I didn't realize I was going to not serve anymore.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're willing to do that, Eric?
Sure.
Does anybody on the commission prefer to do it? Okay. You got lucky?
You won, Eric.
It's about time I won something.
So, the last thing on my list was, last Saturday, I was supposed to attend a luncheon for a young man in town who achieved Eagle Scout, and Betty's car broke a wheel bearing, so I ended up having to replace the wheel bearing on the car instead of going to that. So, in exchange for me messing that up, I have invited the young man and his family to our next meeting, and we will present him with a certificate and generally thing, so I just wanted to let you guys know that I'd done that. Is there anything else for the good of the?
I missed one thing.
Okay.
The Oregon City Business Alliance, their last meeting, a great presentation, was given by our finance director, Wyatt Parneau, and it was, it was well-attended, the slideshow he gave was great. I kind of wish our whole budget committee saw that particular slideshow, and just explaining all the details of the budget and how that process comes. It was just, it was great, it was a great outreach, and there was a suggestion that he would even go around to other groups and give that presentation. So, it's good.
So, anything else for the good of the order? Mark earned.